At this time, I'd like to call our committee of the meeting of the whole in session. And I don't see an audience too much, so I'm gonna skip the audience rules as providing you behave yourself, those that are out there. And Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Tibbs. Councilmember Bench. Mayor Pro Tem Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Bryan is excused. Councilmember Balls is absent. Councilmember Humphries?
Here.
Mayor Browning.
And the purpose of this committee as a whole is an update from our city manager, reference our budget process.
Beth, the manager? Thank you, and I'm going to turn it over to Yolanda right away. We just have three remaining presentations for enterprise funds, internal service funds, and fiduciary funds this evening. Yolanda?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city manager Morales. Tonight, we're gonna go ahead and wrap up the budget discussion by going over the enterprise funds, internal service funds, fiduciary funds, and then Beth Church will come forward to discuss the personnel complement changes. So as you may or may not recall, but our enterprise fund is our largest fund of the city, and this accounts for services provided to the general public on a user-charge basis. The enterprise funds equate about 49 percent of your total citywide budget, and the total budget for this fund type equates to about $57.51 million and represents roughly 67 percent of the non-general fund spending. There are three different funds within the enterprise fund category: our boat launch fund, our sewer fund, and our water operation and maintenance funds. Funding for the boat launch will decrease this upcoming year by $12,661. Our sewer operation and maintenance funds will realize a decrease of about $1.74 million, and the water operation and maintenance funds will experience a decrease of roughly $5.2 million. Overall, the enterprise funds decreased by about $7 million. On pages 251 to 253, we'll find your boat launch fund, and this will be $38,069 for fiscal year '18. And again, as I just mentioned, it will be a $12,661 reduction from the previous year. And this is largely due to not budgeting for any planned capital expenditures. So at this point, I'm gonna ask Ms. Kimberly Mason, our Director of Water and Wastewater Services, to come forward to speak to you with regards to the sewer and water operation and maintenance funds.
The Sewer Operation and Maintenance Fund, Fund 590, can be found in the budget document on pages 254 through 269. The Sewer Operation and Maintenance Fund has a $1,737,373 decrease this year, which is roughly a 7.1 percent decrease. And in the budget document on pages 254 through 255, you can see the organizational chart. Sewer and water operations both are split between Public Services, which Phil Carwatt is the director over, and then Water and Wastewater Treatment Services, which falls underneath me. Next, we have the divisions of the Sewer Fund. We have it split out here, so you can see the Public Services half, and then the Water and Wastewater Services half. And Customer Accounting is also a division of the Sewer Fund, but that falls under the direction of the Finance Director, because that's the part of Fiscal Services, so it's So for Sewer, I'm gonna go over some of the major projects and purchases for the upcoming fiscal year. Vehicle and large equipment purchases, total of $93,660, which includes one stake rack truck for traffic engineering. They do all the traffic setups for any work that Maintenance and Service is doing out in the streets, so we provide part of funding for that operation. So that's one stake rack truck, 10 percent funded in sewer, 15 percent in water, and then the rest is through Act 51 funds. Then we have two 3/4-ton pickup trucks for Maintenance and Service, and that's a total of $62,500. Those are split 50/50 between water and sewer. And then we have a tandem axle truck that's used for the street sweeping operation. It's used most of the time for street sweeping, but part of the time for snow plowing, so there's a split there. It's 25 percent to the Sewer Fund for a total of $27,560 there. Advanced meter reading infrastructure. We're trying to complete the install of the automated meter reading system, so we budgeted more money in the next fiscal year between water and sewer. This is a 50/50 split. This will help us get through the rest of the install and also allow us to have some on hand for any that should fail or need replacement on an ongoing basis. So that's $71,500. And just to give you an update, as of the end of April, we've installed 19,006, and we have 347 more to install to have the entire system under the automated meter reading. Other projects and purchases that we have going on in sewer: parking lot improvements, Maintenance and Service Division. At this point right now, they don't even have parking. When everyone's at work today, we really don't have parking for visitors, because our lot is completely full. So we're going to be adding additional parking spaces, and then we're gonna be adding a parking garage to hold some of our equipment, and then some rehabilitation of some of the pavement. There are various areas where the pavement needs to be addressed, but we're gonna section it out in phases over multiple years. Other thing is sewer-related to road projects. Beth London did a presentation a few meetings back showing you the road work that she would be doing in the upcoming summer, and so this is some of the sewer work that's related to those projects. Veterans Memorial Parkway, $110,000. Barackway, $80,014. Street, $37,000. And then there are some other projects that we have scheduled. It'll be due primarily whether or not we get to these or delay them in the next fiscal year as to the schedule, and then the money, because we're waiting on some of the bids to come in, and then we'll see if we have enough money to do those additional projects. It's gonna include catch basin replacements, catch basin leads, manholes, sanitary leads, and that'll vary per project. Install standby power retention treatment basins. We talked about it last year. There are three basins, three remote facilities, operations that we're going to have standby power versus utilizing consumers' energy, having two dedicated lines for backup power, because after doing an analysis, it was cheaper for us to have the generator than to stay with consumers as a secondary backup. Let's see. Repair the primary settling tank number one. We have a primary settling tank that's shown some issues structurally, and so we're gonna have that tank repaired this next fiscal year. It's at the wastewater treatment plant, primary settling tank number one. And then we have some SCADA system upgrades totaling $104,000, and that's gonna be replace a processor panel and a server on our SCADA system, which is our supervisory control and data acquisition system for both plants. And then we have some other miscellaneous projects on the Sewer Funds totaling about $350,000 that include rooftop heating units, roof replacements at the remote facilities, some pump replacements, switchgear cleaning and testing, replacement of some flow meters, some pavement repairs at the wastewater treatment plant, and then some design of some projects that we plan to do in fiscal year '19.
Are those fiduciary funds in the budget?
Yes, they are. Sure.
Some of that is the street sweeping, and some is directly going into basins?
No, that's all street sweeping.
That's all street sweeping?
The catch basin division is all street sweeping.
Oh. So when you see a truck out there actually cleaning a basin out by pulling the grate and going into it, that's covered where?
That's covered under Maintenance and Service Division.
Oh, okay.
And the actual street sweeping is what's covered under catch basin cleaning. It's confusing, because they're both catch basin cleaning, but street sweeping is set aside in a totally separate division called catch basin cleaning.
And is this all the street sweeping cost across all budgets, or does streets also have a?
No, that's all the street sweeping cost.
This is all the street sweeping?
Yeah.
Okay. A question I think I've brought up before as a citizen: what is the possibility? Have we looked at, can we decrease the street sweeping cost by doing at least a one-day leaf pickup in the fall? Will it reduce our costs enough, or even partially, to cover that? Could we find a budgetary number for that, see whether it would work or not?
Actually, the leaves... You wanna tell him what it is?
Go ahead, I'm gonna listen. I'm interested in what you got to say.
Well, the leaves fall so late that usually we're done sweeping for the winter months by that time, because the leaves typically are done falling like mid-November. And at that point, we've already winterized our hydrants, and so in the winter months, we pump all of the water out of the hydrants down to a certain level to avoid freezing. And so by the time all the leaves are finally falling off the trees, we've already shut that operation down, and so it really isn't...it doesn't save us any money. They fall so late.
Problem is, they're still there in the spring.
I know.
Well, the other situation we have is when I took over, and I think we eliminated that, we still provide curbside leaf collection, it's just not with our own equipment and our crews. I mean, the people have to pick it up, put it in properly.
Right.
But we no longer own that equipment. The AE, the leadways, that stuff was 25 to 35 years old, costing us $20,000 to $30,000 a year in maintenance costs. So when we decided to get out of that, we actually sold our equipment. We no longer have the ability to collect that.
I think the last time I discussed this, we hadn't disposed of the equipment yet. Maybe we just weren't using it.
Yeah, yeah, but yeah, we no longer own that.
Okay. Thank you. And, oh, last question was on the standby power. Is this the third basin? We funded the last two already, first two?
We funded the first one.
First one?
This is gonna be for the second.
This is the second. Okay, thank you.
And now, we're gonna head over to the Water Operations and Maintenance Fund, which is Fund 591, and you can find that on pages 270 through 284 in the budget document. Okay. The Water Operations and Maintenance Fund shows a decrease of $5,237,754, or a 13.2 percent decrease. And that just accounts for the Davis Road Project we're doing, the amount of money that we're spending on the project in the current fiscal year really is what allowed for that drop right there. Once again, we have the split between Public Services and Water and Wastewater Services, which is on page 272 of the budget document. And it shows all the various divisions that each one of us is responsible for, and once again, Customer Accounting is not included in this list, because it's a part of the Finance Department, Fiscal Services. Okay. Major projects and purchases for 2018. We've already started the Davis Road Project. We'll be completing it in the next fiscal year, and this is the remaining balance for completing that project. Then we have on Madison Street, we budget money every fiscal year to address some issues where we know we're having some pressure problems, to go in and do some rehabilitation of some water mains. And so we're gonna do this one on Madison Street between, from Michigan to Fayette, near the hospital. We have an 1890s water main, and it is causing...
1890s?
1890s water main.
Years?
H, yes. So we're gonna be replacing 325 feet of 6-inch water main and upsizing it to 8-inch water main, because with the expansion of the hospitals over the years, we feel that they need an upsize in that water main feeding that portion of the hospital. Yes.
Is that the fun? Water, wastewater services that list a surplus? I can't imagine we actually have extra funds, so why don't you explain what that is?
Surplus is the area where we budget large construction projects and capital improvement projects. That's where we budget those projects in the surplus fund, because we bring in our revenue, and our main goal is to cover debt service and maintenance and operation. And then anything additional that we have in the way of capital improvement projects, we consider surplus. So we separate that out in the budget.
But it's still a plan, you've got a plan to use for it already?
Exactly.
All right.
And that all depends on, we estimate what our fund balance is, and if we have the fund balance available to do those projects, and if not, whether or not we're gonna look at issuing revenue bonds or something like that to pay for those projects.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Continuing with major projects and purchases. Vehicle and large equipment. Once again, it's 15 percent of that stake rack truck that will be used by traffic maintenance, and then the other half of the two 3/4-ton pickup trucks that will be used by Maintenance and Service. And then you see also the other half of the advanced meter reading infrastructure, because water meters are split 50 percent between water and sewer. And then the other half of the parking lot improvements at Maintenance and Service. Okay. Then the water projects related to road projects total $950,000. We've got Williamson Street from Thayer to Traynor, about $485,000. Veterans Memorial Parkway, we're gonna be doing two sections from McGill to Wadsworth and Norman to Narlock. That totals $215,000. And then some of the other miscellaneous projects. The two that we had on hold, that we're waiting to see how the bids come back and whether or not we'll be able to do the road, or sewer and water altogether in those projects. And those projects were on LaPierce Street and on Baum Street. Okay. Other major projects we're looking at in the upcoming fiscal year for the treatment plant, we're looking at a treatment optimization and flow study around $900,000. In the current fiscal year, we're about to put out an RFP to bring on an engineering firm to look at various treatment options. We're seeing some changes that may be coming regulatory-wise, and we want to make sure that we can continue to stay ahead of any regulatory changes, and so we're gonna do some studies to look at if these numbers go here, how do we handle it treatment-wise, and to make sure that we're staying ahead of those changes. And then also with flow, the way that we're handling discharge pressure out of the treatment plant right now is that we're using discharge valves to regulate flow versus having VFDs, which means that we're wasting quite a bit of energy. And so we're looking at where would it be best to install a VFD so that we can decrease that amount of energy use, and also have less wear and tear on those valves and on the pumps themselves.
VFD?
It's a variable frequency drive. It's where you can run the motor, you can open the valve up full flow, and you can speed the motor up and down. And that's much more efficient than opening and closing the valve, which you're wearing that valve. And then it's also causing problems with the internal components of the pump. You start to have more cavitation from speeding that water up and down and closing those valves. It's not as smooth as when you can move the motor speed, and so you start having more problems with those pumps. And then we also have an asset management requirement on the water fund like we had on the sewer fund. We are required to have a water asset management plan to the MDEQ by January 1st of 2018. So we're gearing up to get that done. It's not as extensive. It's a more general plan than what they require for sewer, and we're sure we can have that done in time to meet our regulatory requirement.
Is that done internally?
We have a consulting firm that's working with us. And then SCADA system upgrades again, where we'll be looking at replacing a panel, a processor panel, and a server also at the water treatment plant. Any questions? Yes?
If we save money, is our water bill going down?
Actually, our water rates are set to have one more increase this summer, July 1st. That's what we passed two years ago, three-year set. So the third year comes on this summer, and then we're finishing up our sewer rate study as a part of our sewer asset management plan this fall. So sewer rates won't go up July 1st, but water rates, the third year of that three-year plan, should be coming on. And then next spring, will probably be coming before council lets you know where we're at.
So can you explain to me what is a ready-to-serv fee again? So I can explain.
Readiness-to-serv fee is the fee that we charge for being able to respond to you, and it usually covers like capacity, like for fire protection. Let's say we have to have the system built so large to be able to take our flow up immediately in case of a fire, so we overbuild our system to a certain extent so that we can reach that max day capacity on the fly. So that usually covers capital costs associated with making improvements to the system and excess capacity in the system. Same thing with sewer. With sewer. Thank you. Okay. And if there are no further questions, I'm going to introduce Chaz Bruski. He's an intern with the Office of Management and Budget, and he's gonna come up and talk about internal service funds.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, and City Manager Morales. I'm just gonna get started here with a quick overview of the internal service funds. Basically, the internal service funds accounts for goods and services provided by one city department to another, and then they're reimbursed for what they provide. The internal service funds represent roughly a little more than 6 percent of the total citywide budget, as you can see in the graph there. The internal service funds will all be found from page 285 to 322, and the table below shows the change from last year's approved budget to the proposed budget for this year. We'll get a little more in-depth of these in the following slides. And the total budget for this fund type equates to about $7.16 million for this fiscal year, and this is an increase of about $121,000 from the previous fiscal year. We'll start with the Public Works Building, which can be found starting on page 286 and ends on 289. This fund's expenditures are used to maintain the building for the divisions and departments that utilize it. The sole source of revenues for this fund is fees for service or rent charged to divisions that occupy space within the building. For fiscal year 2018, Public Works Building is projected to receive $425,000 in revenues, a decrease of $121,000. A large portion of this decrease comes from the reduction in capital purchases, which was planned to be $70,000 from last year. The remaining $51,000 is due to the reduction to utilities, motor vehicle costs, and unfunded pension costs. Next, we'll go to the Department of Technical Services. As the city moves forward with its financial challenges, it is important that processes are more efficient and effective. Through technological advancements, the city has been able to be proactive in its responses to city council and the electorate. The fiscal year 2018 budget continues to reflect the city's advancement in this area. There are two funds that are part of this department. The first is Technical Services, the Geographical Information Systems, or GIS, and Technical Services Information Services, or IS. We'll start with the GIS, which can be found on page 290. The Technical Service GIS Fund is projected to receive revenues in the amount of roughly $596,000. Most of this is from charges for service to other departments within the city for goods and/or services rendered. There are two separate divisions in this fund: the GIS Division and the Call Center. The GIS Division of this fund will expend approximately $515,000, which is an increase of 2 percent. This is mainly due to increases that occurred due to fringe benefit costs increasing. The second function of the GIS Fund is the Call Center. This division will equate to about $81,000, which is a $3,000 increase from the prior Now we'll move into the Technical Services IS Fund, which starts on page 296. The Information Management Fund generates revenue solely through charges for services. All city departments and divisions pay for the maintenance and support for all of their computers, phones, printers, and other technological devices. Revenues from these charges will be $1.4 million in fiscal year 2018. This represents a rough increase of $80,000 from last year. Most expenditures are directly related to IS services, and there's a net increase of $84,000. Most of this is due to the planned purchase of a generator for City Hall, which will be partially offset by a decrease in operating services. An additional transfer of roughly $12,000 will go to Celebration Park to assist with the operations and maintenance of the park. The Radio Fund can be found starting on page 300 and ends on page 303. The Radio Operations Fund generates revenues through fees charged for user departments for maintaining and replacing radios. Revenues received in this fund will allow for the city to acquire, install, and maintain two-way radio equipment for departments that need to utilize it. The total Radio Operations Fund will be $161,000 for fiscal year 2018. This is roughly a $20,000 increase from the previous fiscal year. This increase is primarily due to the increase in the cost of maintaining the city's radios, as well as the purchase of new radios that are planned. The Motor Pool Operation Fund starts on page 304. The Motor Pool Operation Fund accounts for the acquisition and maintenance of vehicles and other motorized equipment. The only exception is the Fire Department, which requires more specialized services for repairs. Revenues received in this fund will cover the cost of maintenance and replacement of vehicles and other motorized equipment. The Motor Pool Operation Fund will increase roughly $140,000, or 7 percent from the previous fiscal year. This increase is largely due to an increase in charges for service from the user departments, as well as revenues anticipated from the sale of vehicles and equipment. Personnel services will increase by about $134,000 due to the addition of a full-time motor pool coordinator, which was offset by the elimination of a part-time skilled clerical position. Furthermore, this increase is also due to the reclassification of the motor pool administrator and mechanical repair person three that was approved by council at mid-year. These funds will also realize increases because of the increased fringe benefit cost and a 2 percent across-the-board salary increase for personnel. Operating expenses increased by about $59,000 due to increased information management charges, motor vehicle supplies, and software updates. Other increases to point out is the requested capital purchase of an air compressor and the outfitting of the existing cab and chassis. And now with that, I'll finish up what I gotta do, but I'd like to introduce our other intern, Josh Eichel, to finish the rest of the internal services. intern, Josh Eichel, to finish the rest of the internal services and do the fiduciary funds.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Manager Tim Morales. I am first going to talk about the Insurance Fund and you can follow along on page 310 to 314. This fund accounts for the payment of insurance premiums, the distribution of insurance costs through other city funds and records the insurance claims liability. The Self-Insurance Fund for fiscal year 2018 is projected to be 1.1 million. This is a decrease of a net of around $6,000 due to decreased information management charges and decreased indirect cost allocation. All right. For Internal Service Funds, we're going to talk about Workers' Compensation Fund specifically and you can follow along on page 315 to 319. The Workers' Compensation Fund's revenues are based on a percentage of gross wages for all full-time employees. The city utilizes a median of industrial rates to determine the percentage to assess to each employee job classification. Saginaw Bay underwriters assist the city with determining those rates. Revenues for this fund will amount to around 1.2 million. Expenditures for the Workers' Compensation Administration Division makes up 1.05 million. Expenditures for Employee Health Services make up the remaining $227,000. The total fund will be decreased by around $1,000 in fiscal year 2018 compared to fiscal year 2017. So for fiduciary funds, they're just basically, they account for the administration of property or assets that are owned by other entities. And this slide basically shows how fiduciary funds stack up to the rest of the funds in the city and they account for around 0.24%, 0.24% of the total citywide budget. And now fiduciary funds, you can follow along on page 320 to 332. The total fiduciary funds is projected to be $284,910, so about $285,000. This is a 46% reduction due to a decrease in the Unfunded Liabilities Fund. Unfunded liabilities on page 320 to 322. The Unfunded Liabilities Fund will be $250,000. This represents a 49.35% decrease, about a 50% decrease. This decrease reflects this fund no longer assisting with the payments of retiree healthcare costs for the general fund. However, the city will begin appropriating funding toward the city's OPEV liabilities with the general fund, major and local streets, rubbish collection, sewer and water operations and maintenance funds providing a subsidy. So now cemetery endowment funds, you can follow along on page 323 through 328. And the cemetery endowment funds account for legally restricted resources. Revenues collected in these funds may be used only for cemetery care purposes in support of the city's program. 25% of the revenues collected in the general fund are split and recognized in these funds. This is in accordance with the city charter. The endowment funds are projected to stay the same in fiscal year 2018, so there's no change there. All right. And without further ado, we'll have Personnel Complement discussion with Beth Church. And thank you for having me up here and it was an honor.
I'm going to be giving you an overview of the Personnel Complement changes that are a result of working in tandem with the Budget Office. You have a handout plus I will have the slide presentation here and... It's proposed Personnel Complement changes.
We have electronically, I didn't have it, so thank you.
This will be divided into three different sections. There'll be additions to staff, deletions to staff and then what we call reallocations and title changes. If you've sat through any of my presentations in the past, you'll know we'll do a lot of toggling back and forth between the additions and deletions because they are often very closely tied with each other. So the first one I want to address on the additions is in our Fiscal Services Department. In the Assessing area, we are going to be adding an Office Assistant Two. This is to replace the former part-time position that you will now see deleted in Assessing, where we are deleting the skilled clerical position, which is currently vacant, and we are replacing it with a full-time Office Assistant Two. This will help the Assessing area with some of the other changes that are going on with the new Finance Director and the changes to Assessing and Treasury. This full-time person will assist with some of those clerical assessing duties. And they're also going to wear a second, smaller hat where if they need to help out in the Treasury area, those days when the customer service reps have lines out the door, if it's a busy day of the month, or if we have someone who is out ill, which was maybe an unplanned, you know, absence that day, they're going to hop back and forth across the aisle there to help out and provide additional coverage. We felt that was something that would certainly help in the Treasury area. The second addition to staff you'll see is in the Inspections area of a Code Enforcement Officer. We eliminated on the second page, the Residential Rehab Specialist, which was at a pay grade A26 and just changed the title and massaged the duties a little bit, that we added a third Code Enforcement Officer. And we recently filled that position with a new employee. So now we have three Code Enforcement Officers that have more flexibility in their job duties. The Office of Management and Budget did some small changes with their interns in slightly increasing the amount of hours that they worked and a slight increase in their hourly rate. You'll see that reflected here. And then in the Engineering area, in Public Services is where you're going to see probably the most change with this budget document. We are adding one full Traffic Maintenance Technician One to the complement. If you'll recall, the last time I presented to you, you saw that the Public Services and the Streets area added some laborer positions to go in and make permanent road repairs where we had temporary patching before. What that did was caused more work on the Traffic Engineering Division where they had to go up and set up the road barriers. They also had to go in after those repairs were done and do pavement markings. And so we didn't quite have the staff to keep up with all the road repairs that the laborers were doing, so we are adding one Traffic Maintenance Tech to the complement. Streets and Bridges is going to be adding two full-time brush collectors. Previously, this work was done by four people through a temp agency. We had some retention issues. We had some performance issues. We felt it was better if we had two full-time employees on our pay to handle brush collection. So you'll see that increase in staffing. We are doing some changes with our tree trimmers and our heavy equipment operators in that we're providing for some promotional opportunities for them in exchange for some additional job responsibilities. You'll see that on the deletions page, we are eliminating three tree trimmers and three heavy equipment operators that were all at what would be a Level One and we're replacing them with some Level Twos and some Level Threes. So the number of employees is staying the same, but we are adding some Level Twos who will be doing more complicated work and some Level Threes that can also perform as lead workers out in the field and assist the foreman in those capacities. And the other change is in Facilities with our groundskeepers. These are seasonal full-time positions that in the past, we certainly have had difficulty recruiting. They were coming in at $9 an hour. Minimum wage is $890. We had a difficult time replacing qualified groundskeepers every season with people that had the skills with zero turn mowers and being able to, to use that equipment without us worrying about it being damaged because they were expensive pieces of equipment. So what we did was we created groundskeeper one and groundskeeper twos. The groundskeeper twos are more experienced and will be using the larger mowers and the groundskeeper ones will come in at a slightly higher hourly rate. We're actually saving money by doing this because of the markup fee we had been paying to temp agency employees because we hadn't been able to fill the positions. So we'd go to a temp agency and we were paying close to like $13 an hour. Here, we are actually saving money by creating the two different layers and recruiting ourselves for that. And the last one you'll see in the additions is an Office Assistant Two in Maintenance and Service. This is also connected to one of the deletions you'll see on the second page where we are eliminating the part-time skilled clerical position and replacing it with a full-time position. In Kim Mason's presentation, you heard her refer to the Asset Management Plan in Maintenance and Service that comes with a lot of additional paperwork and reporting to the state. And so what this position will be doing to justify going from part-time to full-time is assisting with all of that additional reporting and administrative and clerical work. So all total, it will show that we are adding 18.6 full-time equivalent employees to the complement at a cost of $648,433. But if you look on the second page, you'll see that the way these are presented, we're also in tandem with that eliminating 15.8 FTE positions and reducing costs by $472,837. Just to finish up on the second page with the deletions, I want to point out there is the deletion of one police officer listed here. I want to explain that that is because there were some changes in the ALURV grant that the police department had been receiving, that that same function that had been served by that grant is now been replaced with a contract employee, the victim's advocate, and that is a contract employee through the CAM Council. The last page shows any reclassifications, reallocations and title changes that have taken place. The first one listed there is the change from an Office Assistant Two to an Office Assistant Three in the office of our city clerk. We had one Office Assistant Two and one Office Assistant Three who did exactly the same job. They were cross-trained in each other's positions, so it made, it was only right that we make them both Office Assistant Threes since they were performing the same function. There's been some changes in the hourly rates paid to our election assistants and our election workers. This was to put them in better alignment with the hourly rates that were being paid to our regular employees. I don't have a total cost savings there because the number of assistants and the number of workers is always hard to pinpoint depending on how many election cycles you have in the year, but there will be some savings there. The one compost site operator we have is being reallocated from a pay grade G17 to a G18 to reflect the wider variety of equipment that's operated out at the compost site. The staff professional that we have in water, in wastewater treatment is being reallocated to a water, wastewater treatment specialist. The incumbent in that position has taken on many more complex reports, direct dealings and workings with our wholesale customers. This is very similar to what we did in the Public Services area last time where we took what was previously an administrative professional position and changed it to a specialist because of the detailed nature of the work that they were doing. And the last one listed is also something that resulted from some of the restructuring that we're doing in the Finance Department is reallocating the Office Assistant Three position in Treasury to a Treasury Assistant. These reallocation changes do not affect the FTE at all and they have an additional cost of $10,736. So if you look at the very bottom of that page, you'll see that overall, as far as the funding for all of these positions, it is only $46,250 hit to the general fund with the rest of the $140,082 being to the non-general fund for a total wage cost impact of $186,332.
It's not directly related solely to personnel, but I'm looking at two different things we did. We created a Parks, Grounds Maintenance Division and then our Celebration Park Fund has the attendance for that in it. Do we have a separate fund for the Celebration Park because we don't really have a Parks and Recreation funding? How is it we have to have these little slices?
We do have a separate fund for Celebration Park because it's for the park itself. We created the Park Maintenance Fund in the General Fund. These, the positions that are listed there were at one point listed in Facilities. So we broke those positions out of Facilities and weed abatement so that we can see what their true costs are over a period of time. So these are just like your grounds type people.
And this Celebration Park, is it just because it's the only attended park? It kind of has to be separate? It has personnel costs because...
Well, the personnel that's in the Celebration Park Fund are your attendants and your coordinators. So those are the individuals that are at the park at all times. When we initially set up the fund, it was the Anderson Wave Pool Fund. So we were, we were required to keep it as a separate fund and we had those individuals there, the attendants and the coordinators there.
It had to be a separate fund due to the way the park was created or funded?
Well, the way it was originally created, yes. So it was like Franken Anderson Celebration Park where it's only the park itself where you have the splash pad and the boulder park climbing wall.
And we, we transfer funds from other departments into that to fund its operations?
Yes, because there is a requirement that we couldn't charge like a fee to come in. So we looked at, most of the money comes from the General Fund because we had our Raptor Center there for the police department. Then IS and the Water Fund were contributing at some point in time. At this point, it's just the General Fund and the IS Fund because of the technology out there.
Oh, okay. That was part of another question, but you just answered it. Why was the Celebration Park coming some out of IS funding?
Yes.
Thank you.
Their funds that aside for their skateboard park.
That, that's a part of Celebration Park. So you have your splash pad, you have the, the wall, the climbing wall, the boulder, well, yeah, boulder climbing, you have the walkway and you have the skating park. So that's all Celebration Park. Yeah, the bocce courts are there too. Yes.
I'm sure how many were on council during the build of the park. Entire park was funded for resources and foundations. So there wasn't any general fund dollar put into the, the building of the park. And when you're funding it with DNR funds, you are not allowed to charge any fees for entry or use of the park, the part that was built with DNR. So I think at the time, council had considered having a admission fee for the splash pad, but we couldn't do that because of the funding. It's a unique way to build a park as we are here. If you don't know, Jeff Klopsick managed the development of the park, which is interesting that the IS Director, GIS Director at the time would have managed the building of the park. But it was a different project. It took quite a while, but it was a really neat project to watch come together. The city had DNR funds for several years without utilizing them. And I believe if we hadn't built a park, we would have had to turn them back to the DNR, so it's a good development to have.
Well, I'm just, I'm just tree trimming.
We had a grand total of five tree trimmers. We're retaining two of them as tree trimmer ones and then giving the opportunity to have two tree trim-
two tree trimmer II's and one tree trimmer III.
Yes.
So essentially, workers that replace what we used to have as a forestry department?
Yes.
Okay. So they're assigned wherever there's a need to, to do this kind of work, but it's not a, there's no cer, the forestry department used to actually regularly maintain all the trees. We don't have that capacity, I'm assuming, anymore, but this is, isn't as needed now. Would that be a better way to put it?
Yeah, we're, I can't, I guess, say exactly what the, the staffing levels, but I can tell you, you know, we, I think we're down to, we have seven heavy equipment operators, five tree trimmers from probably over 35 to 40 in the past, and various job descriptions, so, but most of every, and then we have one compost operator, we used to have two. Now we have the four packer operators when we brought yard waste and recycling back in house, but they're used, you know, wherever we need them. I mean, you know, some days they're picking up brush, trimming trees, cutting trees, grinding stumps, and in winter, you know, they're plowing snow, but that's why they're paid out of multiple accounts. I mean, none of the employees in Streets are paid out of, very minimal are paid out of one account.
Well, a real question goes back to the fact that we aren't able to do the regular maintenance on the trees throughout the city that we used to be able to.
We don't have the ability to just assign a crew year round.
And that's, this is why, we're down to five.
Right, so we're doing, you know, we're doing patches.
Well, I, that's, I just wasn't sure if that was what was left of the original...
Yeah, we, no, we no longer have a forestry department.
Right, but, so this is what, that's, that's where I wanted to know, what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Being none, Beth, thank you very much, very well done.
And that concludes the budget updates for this evening.
Hmm, I hope my wife won't be home till 7:00.
Well, we can, we can, we can keep you here longer.
It only takes a motion from a council member.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
The move is supported. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed?